Where's my rock from?
Yeah, I don't know. Just weird.
What you got five dollars off for?
They're giving these coupons. Five dollars for a thirty dollar purchase. Three separate weeks.
Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the March 6, 2018, meeting of the Whitehall City Council for the purpose of considering such matters that may come before it. I will now call the meeting to order. I would like to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Present.
Bailey.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Elmore.
Here.
Coniston.
Here.
Hannah. Beck. Here. President Graham.
Present.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to excuse the absent member.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Elmore to excuse the absent member. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Beck. Yes.
The absent member has been excused. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for February 2000 and February 6, 2018 Agenda and Regular Meeting and the February 23, 2018 Emergency Special Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 6 and February 23.
Second. A motion by Ms. Coniston and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for the approval of the February 6 and February 23 minutes. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Beck.
The minutes have been approved. At this time, we will have a special presentation by Ohio State University students and our own Mr. Ryan is going to introduce and tell us what it's about.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council. Good evening. I just want to introduce a group of Ohio State students from the City and Regional Planning Program who are working on a project about Whitehall and they're working on some ideas about how to make us a more sustainable city. The word "sustainable" can mean a lot of different things and so they've taken some ideas to make us more green, if you will, or more efficient and worked with that these past few weeks here. So I told them just to, you know, take any of the out-of-the-box ideas that you might have and just get them up there on the board and get your comments from it. So just keep an open mind. Again, these are just ideas. These are people from outside the community that might have some different ideas for us and we'd appreciate any comments about it at the end. So without further ado, I will hand it off. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for letting us have the opportunity to present this to you. It's really an honor.
Can I get everyone to state their name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Adam.
Address?
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's 53. I just moved 161 West California Avenue, Columbus.
Nicholas Batman, 3630 Beulah Road, apartment A.
Orion, 855 Sherrville Drive, Columbus, Ohio, 43221.
And Eric Roberts, 1208 Summit Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43201. Thank you. Again, thanks for allowing us the opportunity. I've had the opportunity of having a studio with our instructor Chad Gibson. And the past of this studio has been some wonderful projects, including COGO stations that have been implemented now in Bexley. We, actually myself, Nick, and Orion sat to create a plan for Orange Township. And these are real plans that have accumulated to real action, so we hope that this ends up being something similar for Whitehall. So with that, I'm going to let you introduce the website itself. And ideally, we're going to use this as a format, but we're open to suggestions of an actual document as well, so keep that in mind as we go through this. Okay. Thank you, Eric. As Eric mentioned, we're proposing a website format. And so in lieu of a presentation with slides, we're just going to give you a tour of the website and show you what it's all about. It is a work in progress. This is our midterm presentation, so we have several weeks left in our semester. And if this doesn't meet your needs in any way, please let us know what's good, what's bad, and we'll adapt it accordingly. What you're looking at is the main page of sustainablewhitehall.com. And it is publicly accessible, so if you have iPads here or if you want to look at it on your computers at home, you may do so, and the public can as well. Again, that's sustainablewhitehall.com, all one word. And this is the main page, and it provides just a basic overview of what is sustainability for people who might not be familiar with the concepts. I'm going to try to avoid scrolling too much because I know that can be kind of disorienting. So I'll just say that down below, it provides some examples of sustainable actions that are happening around Whitehall and some ideas for how people can get involved based on their role in the community, based on their interests, things like that. The meat of the website is contained on this Ideas page, and I'll, we'll go into much more detail on that in a few minutes. But I wanted to mention what these other menu options are. The footprint calculator asks you to go through a brief quiz about your behaviors, and it tells you in what ways you're being sustainable and in what ways you're not, and gives you ideas on how you can improve. The Around Town page is a map with, right now it just has a few projects marked on it of places in Whitehall where sustainable actions are taking place. Our thought is that this is, this would be the component of the website that you all might maintain in perpetuity, just by adding points to this map with a brief description and maybe a link to more information about that project, so people can get ideas. And it's just a Google map, so it's very easy to do. I'm sorry. And then finally, Sustainability Plans is a curated list of more formal plans in the domain of sustainability that we picked because we thought they were especially relevant to Whitehall and very comprehensive. So what we're proposing through the website is more an informal list of ideas. If you ever decide you want to take a step and come up with a formal plan, these might serve as good models for you. And with that, I'm going to navigate to the Ideas page. And I will scroll a little bit here. I'll try and go slow. But essentially, this is a listing of all of the ideas that we intend to provide details about. Today, we're only going to talk in depth about five of those, just to give you an idea of the kinds of content you can expect. Before I start scrolling, I wanted to point out that over here, you can filter these ideas based on people's roles in the community, based on topics of interest, and based on categories that emerge out of that footprint calculator that I mentioned. So if you find your mobility, your transportation is unsustainable, you can click here to get ideas. Okay. So just to give you some ideas of what we're going to deliver, we've got, we cover all kinds of topics, ranging from environmental topics to economic topics to social topics. These are just a few of the ideas. And you can see the, the list is quite long, but not all of these are fully developed at the moment. Okay. And so, like I said, you're free to browse those, and we hope that you'll provide feedback on what's interesting to you. Okay. And with that, I'll dive into the first topic, which is reusable carryout containers. So to get more information, you just click on that header link that I just clicked. And this is the general content you can expect from each recommendation. There's a brief overview of the idea and what it's all about, and I'll go into that in a minute for this particular topic. There's a goal, and this is just a suggestion. Obviously, this project doesn't involve a public outreach component, so this is something that you'd want to adapt. You could adopt it as is, or you could reach out to the community and decide if that's really what you want to do. A list of objectives that will help get you there, kind of recommended roadmap, if you will. And then a precedent. So for each of these recommendations, somebody's already doing a good job with this somewhere in the country or in the world. And so rather than reinvent the wheel, we point you to a good example that you can leverage. So for this particular example, the idea is you have many restaurants in Whitehall, many of which provide carryout meals. And often, these are provided in foam packaging or plastic packaging. In some places, notably Portland and San Francisco, there are companies that are operating that provide reusable packaging to subscribers who pay for this service. And it's a nominal yearly fee. And what happens is the vendor provides the food in the plastic packaging, and then when the person is done with it, they drop it in receptacles around town. It's collected by the company. The company cleans it and redistributes it to the vendors. And so the objectives that I've outlined here, I envision this as mostly a private initiative. Obviously, there could be public involvement as well, but ideally, you'd find a local entrepreneur who's interested in running such a business and helping them get started by perhaps recruiting citizens that are, that might be interested in subscribing or vendors that might be interested in participating. And the good news is that this company that operates in Portland and San Francisco, they offer, essentially, they offer the ability to license their company, their product. And so for a minimal fee, you basically get their entire business plan, you get a how-to manual, you get access to the app that directs you which vendors provide food in these boxes and to receptacles where you can deposit the used boxes and other things, too. Financials, anything you can imagine associated with this business. And so you can get some general information just by going to their website, which I've linked here, or by watching this video. But they also have this licensing agreement term sheet. So if this sounds like something that's interesting to you, you can click this link and find out exactly what you'd get for that fee, the licensing fee. Because this is kind of proprietary information, it's password protected, but we'll obviously be happy to provide that, the login credentials, to city officials or delegates who might be interested. And so that's one topic. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Nick, who's going to tell you about Cool Roofs.
Good evening, everyone. So yeah, I did, I will be working on energy and buildings for this, for this project. So one of the things I picked to lead off of is kind of a pretty easy thing to get your mind around, Cool Roofs. It's a white roof that basically reflects sunlight back into the atmosphere. And the main benefits of it is it reduces energy usage and emissions for the building user, saves them on energy bills. There's kind of an argument about winter versus summer energy usage, but it's pretty much been proven that even in a climate like Ohio, you still get more benefits in the summer than you spend in the winter. Couldn't find a hard number on cost, whether it costs more than a roof. It kind of depends on the age of the current roof you have. And the cost is nominal. And the long-term savings that you get, it's about 20 cents per square foot annually of roof in terms of energy savings. But aside from the benefits given to, you know, just the people in the building and whoever owns it and pays the bills, there's also the people that walk around the building. This reduces the effects of urban heat island. So they've been proven to reduce surface temperatures by one to two degrees Fahrenheit. And it also reduces the potential for smog. So nitrogen oxides that could be created by heat activating with vehicle emissions. And a lot of our strategies focus on institutional and commercial buildings, which are all positioned around the pedestrian corridors that are outlined in the zoning code. So if you want people to walk around, you want them to feel comfortable. Some examples we have of white roofs that already exist in the city, that I know the pictures are kind of hard to see. But the first one on the left is the Defense Supply Center Columbus Buildings. The one in the middle is the New Target that was built here. And then on the right, we have Beach Wall Elementary, which all have white roofs. And those are only a few of the already existing ones that we have. So I think it's a very, it's a very attractive option. We also have a roof savings calculator from the Oak Ridge National Laboratory to help prospective installers figure out what their cost would be. So that's White, that's Cool Roofs. I'm going to turn it over to Eric now, who's going to tell you about COGO.
So I mentioned briefly that one of the previous projects that OSU City and Regional Planning Masters Studio has done was to expand the COGO network. And that actually expanded somewhat into Bexley, which we'll see in a diagram below. I think everyone here is familiar with COGO and the idea of a bike share system. I think really, it embodies what is known as the three Es of sustainability. Economically, it improves access to commercial activity. Environmentally, it produces less emissions in a smaller package. And in terms of equity, it's a healthy option, and it also can provide people who otherwise don't have access options, an option to access some of these local amenities. And so you see here, I've just given just a brief overview of some of that. But I also conducted a preliminary spatial analysis based on some data from Morpsy. And so this is a heat map that shows some of the proposed stations here in the pink. And so one right here is right at Kroger. This is, of course, at Yearling and Broad. And this one is at Hamilton and Broad. And this is actually right by City Hall. What this heat map is showing is, first of all, these are bikeways, so these aren't just any old roads. These are roads that are of particular interest to cyclists. And the heat map is showing vehicular traffic and particularly congestion in certain areas. And what that congestion represents in part is where they're getting stopped at lights and also where there's more likely, there's more likelihood for there to be commercial activity. And so the placement of these bike stations is strategic in this way that it is to provide not only access for people, but also to provide access to specific amenities. We don't just want bikes going to any old place. We want them to have a location and a destination where they can rack them and where they can take them off. This is another diagram that shows a couple things. So first of all, COTA stops. Now, I can't zoom into this map in particular, but each of these is located very closely except for the one at City Hall, because we do not have a COTA line that goes down Yearling, of course. But these are all located very closely to a COTA bus stop. And that's intentional because we want to ensure that there is additional connectivity to other services, especially for the people in the community who depend on those services. Another thing that I included in this map is some Morpsy data that is cyclist's level of comfort rank. And so what you see here is that these are the dark green, the most preferable roads. Light green are slightly less preferable, yellow, less preferable than that, and red, of course, the least preferable. And Broad Street right now is in the third category. And I think that really introducing some infrastructure into this could really help with some of the congestion, especially if more people start using this. And of course, with bike share systems, you want to have more dense networks, but this could be a really great way to introduce the community to it. And also, one thing that I mentioned later in the strategies, too, is that this map could be presented to the community and through multiple public meetings, you could determine which of these locations best serve the population. And for this location in particular, of course, these are mostly accessing commercial areas. This is the only one that's really centrally located for residential. So I would imagine that perhaps people in these areas might be accessing these other three. So that's just an overview of the recommended locations. And you can also, on the website, just sort of browse through what I sort of just described there. And again, the goal with this, with the expansion of COGO into Whitehall, we would hope to see perhaps new bicycle ridership and less congestion. And also, it would help sort of make Broad Street a friendlier place. I know that there's a lot of traffic that happens on Broad Street, and it has the potential to make it what is often called a complete street, right? It sort of frames it in that way. If it leads into perhaps the introduction of a bike lane or something else of that nature, it could help with one of those strategies. And then underneath my strategies here, I just have a few different videos that might be of inspiration. So this is an overview from the city of Boulder. They have one of the top bike share networks in the country, along with Denver, Colorado. And Chattanooga, Tennessee also has a pretty good video as well. And then this is just sort of a good overview. So that is COGO Bike Share in Whitehall. And now I'm going to pass it off to Orion.
Thank you. All right. So I have been tasked with going over the waste reduction throughout Whitehall. So my data for the waste reduction is based actually off of the Franklin County information. Finding data specific to Whitehall is a little difficult, but Franklin County also has a little bit more of an impact. So just the initial statement, just kind of giving the overview in 2017, the amount of waste that was generated, 2 million tons, I think will resonate with a lot of people that look over everything. And also, a statement from SWCO, the landfill for Franklin County. They made a statement that at least 20% of the waste material was recyclable. So there is an opportunity where we can increase our recyclable efforts in Whitehall for sure as well. So some of the objectives that I have are pretty basic, but SWCO also has a grant opportunity, if anybody's familiar with that, kind of, sort of, to help incentivize more recyclable outreach efforts in the area. And then my examples are also kind of going off of Columbus's Green Model 3. They have a pretty decent recycling efforts throughout Columbus. And then I have one more along waste reduction about reusable bags. That's mainly to target the litter rates. Throughout Ohio, there was a little over 11 tons of litter located on, throughout the streets and roadways. And a lot of it was plastic bags. So the idea here is to initiate reusable bags throughout Whitehall and various other places. But one example of how that can be done is to ban plastic bags and charge for paper bags as well. So that's it that I have for waste reduction. And then our last topic to talk about is kind of a big overreacher, is a circulator street, a streetcar. Do that? Do that? Yeah, I know. No. This is the big idea. But the main topic, and I think everybody was getting it from Eric's, was to help reduce traffic along Broad Street. And this is definitely an option that could help along Broad Street, especially through lunch hour. There's a couple of loops that I've proposed and some bus stops that could be implemented to go along with the circulator. But we know that's expensive and it's really hard to implement. But they also have bus trolleys that can also be integrated as well, a little easier to implement and maneuver around. So. But that's it for our presentation. Do you have any questions you want to throw out there?
A lot of great ideas. A lot of great ideas. Thank you. Thank you all.
I do have a question. It was the one, I think Eric yours, concerning the COGOs. You had Broad Street and Main as a yellow corridor, and it looks like you had Etna Road going right through the middle of the city as red. Was there any reason why Etna Road, the red corridor, was not as bicycle-friendly as the other two? If you could explain that to me.
So this data came from Morpsy. I didn't edit the data in any such way other than to make visible the colors of what they represented. I actually couldn't tell you why Etna Road specifically is red. I did go on Google Maps Street View and sort of take a virtual tour through, and I can't imagine specifically why it might be. Perhaps there's more traffic than one might expect, or maybe there's potholes in the road that make it uncomfortable for a bicycle. I mean, those are things that I would probably have to be a cyclist on the road to experience myself. And then you asked also about Main Street?
Well, Main Street is the other, the one on the south side. It's yellow, and it's almost as busy as Broad, if not just as busy. So I know I understand why those are yellow. I would think those would be red. But that's just me. On the east side of Etna, we do have a bike lane there, too, as well.
Yeah.
Morpsy may not have known that.
Yeah. So I just want to make two comments about this data. One is I can't remember how old the ranking data is, but I believe it was derived from cyclist surveys.
Okay.
So it may have more to do with people's perception of what it's like to live on that road. For example, I know, I'm a cyclist myself, and sometimes even on a busy street with two lanes, it feels more safe than on a slower street with one lane, just because it's easy for cars to get around during the other lane.
Ah.
So I don't know if that's the case with Etna Road.
Well, there is parking on one side of the street, and as you go over into the west, you know, they can be on both sides sometimes. So that could be it. And it's a smaller residential road, even though, and it is traveled, I think, a lot, especially during the school hours, you know, because we have elementary schools at each end. So that could be an issue, too. Well, thank you.
There's also five on the west side of that. There's five stops on those, too. When you're riding, if I get stopped and start, especially over there in the woods, they're just, they're just one block apart.
Yes.
I have a question. Other than Bexley and then Presley, or are there other cities that are interested in the sustainability projects? And if so, have you?
When you say other municipalities, you mean other Columbus metro areas that are, that have sustainability plans or have specific initiatives?
Like, Bexley is one that you, that has a sustainability project with COGO, right? And they might have some other ones. And then us, are there any other local localities, municipalities? And if so, what are the, what are they most interested in as projects, sustainability projects?
Sure. I mean, I can speak to our current studio, so we're actually one of three groups.
Okay.
And just locally, Reynoldsburg, immediately to the east, is undergoing primarily a tree renovation. So they're trying to help them become a Tree City USA. So they're interested in urban canopy and some of the landscaping features and sustainability in that regard. I know to the south, Lockbourne, which is a much smaller municipality, of course, they're expanding some of their recreational facilities and undergoing a sustainability plan. I know that Upper Arlington has a sustainability plan of their own. They're also a Tree City. I believe most municipalities in Columbus are actually in Tree City USA as well. I think actually, to not have a sustainability plan almost seems like it's on, it's in the minority of communities. I know even Clintonville, which is a community embedded within Columbus, has its own sustainability plan. So there's quite a few in the area.
Thank you. What does COGO stand for? Did I miss that?
Columbus Go.
Columbus Go.
Columbus Go.
Go, okay.
It's not quite an acronym, but.
And then are all of you undergrads?
We're all master's students.
Master's students.
That's correct.
And marketing, or what's your?
City and Regional Planning.
Very good. Very interesting.
Does anyone else have?
Well, I have a couple of questions. So with COGO and programs like COGO that aren't in Columbus, because then the acronym doesn't work, do demographics play an impact at all in the effectiveness of those kind of programs? Is it higher utilization in more affluent or lower socioeconomic areas?
Sure. So it really depends on the kind of outreach and the buy-in that you receive for it. So in places like where there is a complete absence of bus routes or something to that degree, bike stations are a very cheap way to implement. They can be implemented within one to two years. They're much cheaper to run than buses, of course. And depending on how you price them, they can be a lot more accessible for folks as well. And also, it might be. And also, it might be to their favor because there's more flexibility in that they can go places instead of having to wait for a bus, for example. So, and also, it depends on how you consider the public outreach. So if you forego any public outreach, well, then you forego any attempt at really ensuring that this is going to be used by the people who might use it.
Okay.
So it's kind of dependent on the process, but I know that COGO, the way that they do it is that you would actually sort of suggest the station, and you kind of work with them. It's sort of an iterative process.
Right.
So it's, yeah, it's kind of a step by step.
On the cool roofs, in your research, did you see that that was usually done in tandem with solar panels in, as an alternative to solar panels? Did it have a, any bearing? We did a project with Wasserstrom over on Broad Street that utilized the Frank County PACE program, Property Assess Clean Energy. And I was trying to think if this would be something that could even be added to that list. So I'm just trying, you know, they did solar panels, so I'm just trying to see if it's...
If you want to do cool roofs and solar panels, like that's, you're not only, you know, making your building more efficient, you're also getting it off of just fossil fuels in general. So, I mean...
It's not necessarily a one or the other, is that what?
Yeah, it could be both.
Okay.
I mean, usually, the cheaper option is to just do the cool roof.
Paint away.
Yeah. There, and in the strategy section, there's a, there's a project called the Cool Roof, White Roof Project, that actually comes out and helps communities paint roofs. So, I mean, that's, there are a bunch of ways to save with a roof. You can paint it, you can do a total replacement if your roof is old enough. There are varying, like, colors, so like, I know in California, there are some places that have laws requiring cool roofs.
Well, that was going to be my next question. Are there, I mean, you referenced on the website that I went to, I mean, you referenced changing building code. Is that something that you see in Ohio or locally, or is there anywhere, you know, east of the Mississippi River that looks at that from a building code standpoint?
Um, I, not that I know of.
Okay.
But it looks like the businesses are picking it up themselves, and so are the schools and, I mean, the federal government, which, I mean, it's kind of hard to get stuff done there.
Does it figure into lead standards or anything?
It can, yeah. That can definitely be an option for getting lead points.
Yeah, because I know EPDM products, Duralast, all of them are, a lot of them are white for that reason.
Yeah.
And it saves on heat buildup on roof-mounted equipment.
Yeah. Yep.
And then lastly, on the plastic bags. So on plastic bags, again, you talked about code, and I know that there, you know, obviously there are stories of places in California. There's no one locally that has really entertained the idea of outlawing them for litter?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Well, thanks, guys. That was a really nice presentation, and while you're sitting here, I was able to jump on the website.
Now that the website is up, who will maintain it, who will be working on that?
So first of all, I want to stress, it's not ready to go yet.
Okay.
So people will continue to work on a separate instance of it. So what you see now is what you'll see until we're ready to put the final content on there. At that point, our thought was the only portion that would really require regular maintenance is the around-town part, the metal. Yeah, yeah. Let me show you what that looks like. And all of this is totally optional, by the way. So around-town literally just embeds a Google map, and the idea is, it's meant to be motivation for people, right? As sustainability projects happen around town, you can put them here, and people can get a little bit of information. I think some of these have links. Yeah, like, here's a link. So the idea is you don't have to put very much content in it yourself, but it still provides a source of motivation and information for people. That said, this ideas part that we're building, it's completely customizable via a user interface built into the website. So it's very easy to add additional content, to take away content, to make it your own. And so if you choose, you could do that. But the thought is it would be zero to minimal maintenance going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
The application on the white roof, is that mainly geared toward industry and business? Or are you looking at for residential as well?
It's mostly geared for business and institutional. Yeah, is what we have in the strategies. There are cool roof options for residential properties, and I think we included that as a strategy, as like, just kind of an incentivizing thing. I know that Whitehall has kind of, it has the home improvement matching programs, so maybe if that was implemented.
You had mentioned painting. What types of paint are you going to use to paint a shingle roof on a?
You can't.
Thick paint.
Thick.
You can't.
Yeah, the painting is mostly, the coatings are mostly for commercial and low-slope roofs, yeah.
Because years ago, I had a white, flat rubber roof put on my back and closed porch, and that cost me as much as the whole house did. It's pricey if you go with a rubber roof. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I can just have, unless anyone else has a question, just as a general question, and this can be pushed back to later, if you want to just reach out through Joe Ryan to get to us, but we were wondering if the website is truly the best format for a sustainability plan. And in the interest of a sustainability plan being sustainable and being used by Whitehall, we want to make sure that we present it in a document, or in a format, rather, that is going to be best utilized. We went back and forth with the website and creating an actual document, and we're far enough along now that it's not too late that we could create a document. So, you know, unless you have any immediate feedback, you know, just keep it in your mind that, you know, this could be a website, it could be a document, it could potentially be both, but those options are still on the table. So we'd like some feedback on that, if any, that you could provide.
One of my thoughts was, you know, this is kind of a cultural thing in thinking, and I was wondering if, you know, when we think about litter, with your idea up there about reusable carryout containers, we have a lot of litter we deal with, so do most communities. But if you involve schoolchildren at a young age in something like this, even developing it, you know, and be a part of it, that it would instill in them the whole concept of sustainability. So I just wondered if you guys ever thought about that? I don't know what level in education, maybe even down into the elementaries.
It's a consideration, it's further down in the list. It's just something we didn't want to bring up for the meeting, but it is. For the education outreach.
Okay, thanks.
I like the website. And as far as going with paper or going with the website, I think that the name kind of says it all, is we certainly don't want to go ahead and, you know, create more paper that is going to go ahead and litter Whitehall.
Same thing.
It does kind of defeat the purpose there.
Right.
I love that it could be very interactive with the community. I love the idea of it completely. So I'd love to see it actually come to fruition.
And we do have a, we do have a city website that could have a link to that, and I think my personal thought would be that in today's world, people are more likely to look at it there than they are on a piece of paper, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to take it. So I think that would definitely be the best way to approach it, would be with a website.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for your feedback as well.
Yeah, good work.
Thanks.
We will move on on our agenda to our standing committee reports. We'll begin with Administration and Financial Management Chairperson Bailey. Oh, I'm sorry. We have poll public. Oh, I've...
Yep, sure do.
Missed it.
Move right ahead.
Yes. So if anyone would like to come forward at this time, you'll have up to three minutes to state your issues, concerns, praises, whatever they may be. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Don Minor, 660 West Fall. That's my wife there is with me. I'm here today for a growing concern, especially around my house in the community, is that we're having a lot of problems with kids coming out of school and stuff. And there being a, it's come to a point where it's just about crossing that line, is they're destroying property and stuff. And I've called the police several times, and it has gotten no response from them. Basically, they can't really do much about them, because the time they show up, they're gone. I mean, I think as a community, we're going to have to find a way to address this problem, because it's an ongoing problem, and I can't see it getting any better, because the older they get, the bolder they're going to be, and soon the problem's just going to grow. So if we don't find a way to address this, we're going to have a real big problem in the future, because you're going to go from throwing rocks at my garage door and putting big dents in it, to breaking in your homes and everything else. So that's the reason why I'm here tonight, because I wanted to see what we can do as a community, to try to put something together that we can work together with the police department, so we can get this under control. Because it's not only affecting the community, but it's also affecting your businesses, too, because most of your businesses now have went from being able to stay open until 11, 12 o'clock at night, they don't want to deal with the problems anymore. So now they're closing at 8, 9 o'clock. And how many businesses do want to come into Whitehall and establish a business, and you know they're going to have to close their door? So it's, you know, one of the things like that, it's just a snowball effect. It's affected the community all the way around. If we don't find a way to deal with it, we're going to have a big problem. And it's in nowhere. Who to talk to about it, and what maybe we can sit down and discuss, maybe we can figure out a way to come up with something that might address this problem. That's pretty much all I've had to say. So I just, I'm a little upset tonight, because it happened to me tonight again, so. But I wasn't prepared for the meeting exactly, so I've seen it was on tonight, so I decided to come down, so, address the problem.
Well, we can certainly pass this on to the police department.
I will personally talk with the police. I would like to maybe after the meeting, get your information, and I'm sure you're not, probably not the only one. If this is happening to you, it's probably happening to other people. And I think that we can, there's probably, you know, things that we can do. So, yeah, we're very interested in helping you.
Well, I know it's affecting some of the other communities, because basically they're going down and ripping the boards off the fences and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, just anything they can to do, it's a problem, basically, in many cases. I've already caught like, three or four of them stealing bikes and stuff out of people's yards, you know. So, I mean, this is, this is a growing problem. It's not going to get any better. And unfortunately, it seems to be the streets over there with the back alleys are becoming even worse, because they can hide back there and behind everything, and they can nose around a little better. So, yeah, I'll stick around and give you my address and stuff. You probably see, I probably got plenty of reports down here on this.
If you'd like, I can step out, and I can take it, so you don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you don't want to.
That's, I think there was another one we wanted to stay forward to and see what was going on with.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time?
Gerald Dixon, 3877 Donie Street. Great presentation. And Whitehall, this, I don't know how this coming together came about, but I think it's an amazing job and some great questions from some of you here on the TOS. I'd like to applaud Mr. Minor for coming out to the council meeting and letting you know about some issues that he's having. I think when citizens are that proactive and they care about the community, and they let their leaders know that it's important, these are just little odds and ends I wanted to communicate with you. I also wanted to say, you know, when I go to the meetings in the back room here, there's no opportunity to speak. You give me two, three-minute opportunities twice a month, and those really aren't conversations. We can't have conversations. That which I would like to have, a conversation, you find out a whole lot more with people, about people, et cetera, but unfortunately, we don't have that. We have dialogues. You speak, I speak, he speaks, whatever. And this is my only opportunity to come to you and express feelings, thoughts, opinions, grievances, et cetera, and I hope you understand that. I know that it all seems like criticism sometimes, and that seems to be my area of expertise, not to criticize, but rather to find what is wrong, and I can appreciate it. I can appreciate that.
You're not giving yourself enough credit, Jerry.
No. Thing is, is we all have our talents, our wheelhouses.
That's right.
And one of mine is finding out a problem and finding out things in which to fix it. If there are problems, and as you know, and as if you've read anything that I've written, if there are problems within my government, I have a responsibility and an obligation to point them out for the health of our community. And that's what I do. So I just hope that you understand that when I get up here and talk, that's what this is about. It's trying to, it's my only opportunity to converse with you.
You do have my phone number. You can call me anytime. We can speak anytime after the meeting.
All right, we'll have coffee.
I can do that. I don't drink coffee, but I would drink a Coke. Or a soft drink. Let me put it that way. I don't drink Coke either, so.
Anyway, that was it. Thank you.
All right. I thought she was coming up to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time? All right, then. Now we'll move on to the standing committee reports. And we'll begin, as I said before, with Administration, Financial Management Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration, Financial Management did meet last Tuesday, and I think we discussed four items which will be introduced tonight. Three of them are ordinances, one resolution. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
All righty, thank you. Sir, Community and Elder Advocacy Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy did meet. We have an ordinance that will be heard today. Minutes are on file, and that's all I have for you today.
All righty, thank you. Next, we have Community Standards and Enforcement Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement also met last week. Our minutes are on file. We discussed upcoming ordinances 13 and 14, which we'll be voting on this evening. We'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30 in the back.
All right, thank you, sir. That brings us to Economic Development Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last week. We have nothing on the agenda. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet next week after 6:30 sometime in the...
All righty. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week. We have no items on the agenda. We will need our notes, our meeting notes are on file. We will meet next week, next Tuesday, sometime after 6:30.
All righty. Next, we have Public Safety Chairperson Connison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again in the back sometime after 6:30 next week.
All righty, thank you. Next is Parks and Recreation. That's Chairperson Canner. He's unable to attend the meeting this evening. However, that committee also met last Tuesday. Their minutes are on file. They shall also meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30. Those are all the standing committee reports. We'll move on to our officials' reports, and we'll begin with our mayor, Ms. Kim Maggard.
Good evening. I would like for council to consider favorable consideration of ordinances 14 and ordinance 23. I would also like to invite everyone here this evening to the State of the City address, which will be a week from tomorrow on March 14. You can come at 6:30 to the Wasserstrom Building on Broad Street. You will, I know, greatly enjoy the newly remodeled building. It is beautiful on the inside as well as the outside. 5:30, there will be food available. It will be from the Mad Greek Restaurant here in Whitehall. And then at 6:30, the State of the City will begin. So if you want to know what's really going on in Whitehall, then you should come to the meeting, and I know that you'll see... meeting, and I know that you'll see lots of friends there and probably neighbors. So I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Next, we have our city attorney, Mr. Michael Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. The city attorney's office will report for the month of February. We prosecuted 324 cases in our mayor's court. Out of those 324 cases, 37 of those were of a criminal nature committed by Whitehall residents, and so that's about 11 percent. Last year, that number was about 14 percent. So we're trending down with respect to Whitehall residents with respect to that. I want to add, and I have not done this, but I wanted to just kind of add this for your consideration, because I don't normally report on it. We had 87 cases that went down to municipal court. In those cases, so you know what those are, they're more of an aggravating circumstance, domestic violence, DUIs, that where a person moves their case out of mayor's court, and they want it considered downtown for consideration by a judge instead of by a magistrate. And so out of those 87 cases, 20 of those were of a criminal nature from Whitehall residents. I did not get the dis... How those cases were adjudicated, but I will start doing that in the future, so that council knows kind of the breakdown of what's happening in mayor's court versus what's happening downtown. And that's with respect to all of the mayor's court cases and cases that the city attorney's office has handled in February. Secondarily, I would like to thank everyone that came out to the Justice Circle meeting last, I believe it was last week?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, last week. Time is running by me. It was a fantastic meeting, and to anyone that really wants to get involved, especially with you, Mr. Minor, I would like you to look in the back. That is one of our school board members that's sitting in the back. If you want to be involved and be a part of the solution as it relates to our youth, the Youth Justice Circle meeting that we had last week was a step in that direction. We will have more meetings as it relates to that, so you'll get some additional information there. And so that is it from the city attorney's office, just out of the city attorney's office. I'm very excited to announce my daughter's back from Hampton University. She is, can you believe, a rising junior. She's about to end her sophomore year. She's home for spring break, and I'm just so excited to see her. My wife has been gone since last Friday, so I'm really excited about this meeting to be over as soon as possible, because I just haven't seen her for a few days, and I kind of like her a lot. So, thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening, and I look forward to talking to you more, Mr. Minor, if you have any questions for me.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our city auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report today. I would like to ask for favorable consideration on ordinances 10, 11, and 15, and resolution 14.
All right, thank you, sir. Next is our Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Zach Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening, nor family members in the audience.
All right.
Yes, you do.
That's good. Next, we'll hear from our treasurer, Mr. Steve Quinsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I, too, have no official report.
All righty. I'm sure Mr. Bivens appreciates that, so the meeting can move right along. We have received no officials' reports since our last meeting, but under communications, petitions, and claims, we have the agenda for the March 8, 2018, meeting of the Planning Commission. We also have the minutes from the February 1, 2018, meeting of the Planning Commission. At this time, Ms. Frymark, please call the roll, on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, and including any add-on legislation.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
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 All righty. We will start with our third reading items, and first up, we have ordinance 10, 2018. It's approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of $445,720 from various accounts in the Wim Pity Fund to the Debt Service Fund.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 10, 2018, move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of ordinance 10, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 10, 2018 has been passed. This thing's not doing what I want. There we go. All right. Next up, we have ordinance 11, 2018. It's funny how they're all in the same... One number follows the other one numerically. Transferring $450,745 from the debt from the bond... From the bond retirement account to the Debt Service Fund. I knew that Debt Service Fund was in there somewhere. I just tried to get it out sooner than we needed it.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 11, 2018, and move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and adoption of ordinance 11, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
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 Ordinance 11, 2018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 13, 2018. It's authorizing the repeal of Chapter 1333 and the modification of Chapter 1127.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 13, 2018, move for its adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and adoption of ordinance 13, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 14, 2018 has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have under third reading. Under second reading, we have ordinance 21, 2018, authorizing the addition of an additional fee for electrical service reinstillation. That ordinance is being read by title only. Our next ordinance for second reading is ordinance 22, 2018. It's authorizing modifications to Chapter 1301. That is also being read by title only. It's also the last item of legislation we have under second reading. Under first readings, we have ordinance 23, 2018. It's authorizing a fund transfer from unappropriated monies in the General Fund to the Capital Projects Community Recreation Fund in the amount of $88,000, $88,000, authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation from the Capital Improvements Project Community Recreation Fund to the Community Recreation Project expense account in the amount of $88,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 23, 2018, and move for a suspension of all the rules.
Second.
All of them. Well, I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Ms. Connison for introduction and suspension of all the rules on ordinance 23, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
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 The rules have been suspended on all the rules, I might add, have been suspended on ordinance 23, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison for adoption of ordinance 23, 2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
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 The rules have been suspended on all the rules, I might add, have been suspended on ordinance 23, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 14, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
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 The rules have been suspended on all the rules, I might add, have been suspended on ordinance 23, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Ms. Connison for introduction and suspension of all the rules on ordinance 23, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
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 The rules have been suspended on all the rules, I might add, have been suspended on ordinance 23, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison for adoption of ordinance 23, 2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
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 The rules have been adopted. Our next ordinance is 24, 2018. It's amending 745, titled "Vendors and Solicitors." It's being read by title only. Our next ordinance is 25, 2018. It's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and, as subsequently amended, changing the zoning on properly located at East Broad Street, parcel number 09000096090005610090009898. That's 000898090000581090005894090000614 from apartment district A2, limited commerce district and general commerce district to planned unit development property owned by the city of Whitehall.
You only have to do that two more times.
I'm going to have to do something, by the way. It's written here. As I said, that's being read by title only. It's also been referred to the Planning Commission for their March 8 meeting, and we also have a public hearing on it on April 3rd. Our next resolution is 14, 2018. It's resolving to approve that announced certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 14, 2018, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 14, 2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 14, 2018.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Resolution 14, 2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Resolution 14, 2018 has been adopted. We do have one item to add to our agenda this evening. It is Resolution 15, 2018. It reads, "Resolution to adopt a comprehensive development plan that describes the public need for the property known as Woodcliff Condominiums, and affirming the public need for the property as nuisance abatement, and authorizing the mayor on behalf of city council to make an offer to purchase 317... 317 parcels from the Woodcliff condominium unit owners association." Again, that's being read by title only. It's the last item of legislation we have before us this evening. It's our second opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you'll have up to three minutes to do so.
I used to be able to spring up quicker. A couple of quick things, and sorry, I know you're wanting to get with your daughter, so, my apologies. They failed to mention the white... The cool roof on the hairdresser on Broad Street. And since you've gotten your pads, none of you look up anymore during the meetings. You're all like teenagers with an iPad. Anyway, so, last week, the mayor... I'm sorry, Gerald Dixon, 3877 Dona Street. Last week, the mayor brought forth a draft piece of legislation amending a codified ordinance regarding vendors and solicitors. Sitting in the back, I was alarmed at a lack of interest paid it by any of you. Outside of a couple of questions by Councilman Bailey, there really wasn't anyone who used critical thinking skills to play devil's advocate for the benefit of the people they're supposed to be representing. It was... Or as a citizen, I find it frustrating and troublesome. So then, let me use this opportunity to play the critical role of devil's advocate. Unless there are statistics showing abduction, rape, murder, or home invasion against Whitehall citizens by vendors and solicitors, I would see no justification for changes to the law. Inconvenience or irritation of personal intrusion is not justification to add more laws, fingerprinting and background checks of people selling products, more paperwork, more government bureaucracy that will complicate things and further strangulate an already overburdened liberty. Bigger government, more employees. More employees, more tax dollars needed. More tax dollars needed, less money in the citizens' pockets. And for who and for what? I have never heard of this being a problem before in all the years I've lived here. Why now? What has become so alarming now? It's more diminishing and penning in of our society, as well as more illogical, fear-based laws. As well, you talk about it affecting kids selling candy and cookies, and while they also fit the exact definition of a peddler, as defined in the legislation, you express a hopeful belief that no one would call the police if kids haven't the defined requirements to peddle. I'm sorry, but this is allowing different treatment for one person or group than another, which goes against the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, a part of a larger document you swore an oath to support. There is also a portion which prohibits peddling and soliciting on Sundays and legal holidays, which sounds exactly like the old blue laws based on religion. Our shared society is made up of varying people, as the government, which represents all of them, no one day is different than another in regard to selling citizens something. I remind you of the First Amendment in regard to making any law respecting an establishment of religion. So, too, citizens calling the police department because someone didn't display a lanyard or disrespected their no-knock wishes? A department, I remind you, which is overburdened and already can't find the time to catch the many speeders who menace our streets, diminishing our quality of life? The mayor and others poo-pooed truck legislation a few years back because the fear was in tying up officers' time regarding truck weights. But they have all the time in the world to respond to unregistered salespeople? This was the nice version, by the way. I niced this one up.
Okay, we appreciate that. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time? Apparently not.
I don't know, I heard your son say that.
Some people changed their mind. All right. One more time, I'm going to ask one more time if there's anyone else who would like to come forward at this time for poll public. He's just doing this tag of it, Mike.
Is it working?
All right, that was your last chance. I gave you every chance I could, so we're going to move on to Community Date Board.
As the mayor said, the State of the City is next Wednesday, and then the following Sunday, Keen Yarra will be having an event in support of the FOK. You can all join them at twelve to six on Sunday, March eighteenth.
Thank you. Then on March twenty-first, it's a Wednesday, come on over to the high school at three thirty in the cafeteria and help us put some Easter eggs together, and I'll have extra candy for those that might want to partake.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, the twenty-first.
Who else has? Oh, go ahead.
A few days later, actually, will be the Easter egg hunt over at John Bishop Park.
We were waiting for that.
Ten o'clock, over at ten oh five.
Oh, devil this year.
That's long. That was long, I know.
You're really going to hide them, huh?
Really going to hide them this time.
Who else has something for Community Date Board this evening? All right, we'll move on to poll council. We'll begin with Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd like to thank everyone for coming out and for their input, and I enjoyed the sustainability for Whitehall presentation. I thought that was very good. You all have a good week. I thank you.
All right, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, thank you all for coming out, and sustainability is a big topic across the United States, and I'm excited to see it starting to enter our community. There's a lot of things we can take advantage of. And Dawn, I believe you're going to get satisfaction. You'll hook into the resources tonight that will make that happen. And I didn't catch your address.
It says to Westfall.
Westfall, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too agree, the Sustainability Project was a wonderful presentation this evening and something that's going to be great for the community, and same look forward to helping out with your situation there because that is something that we do have to be more proactive on. Thank you for bringing it forward. Let's all have it, Mr. President.
All right, Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank everybody for their comments and their concerns today. It is a step in the right direction. We do care about the welfare of all the citizens of Whitehall. There are times that we may not do what some citizens ask us to do, but we are listening to the majority of the people that come to us, and we are hoping for a positive outcome in those instances, and we care about this city. The other thing is, a great program on the Justice Circles. I attended it. It was very good. That would be something that, it might interest you, Mr., I can't remember your last. Mr. Myers, I'm sorry. That would be something I think you would be very interested in at least finding more about. And also, the Sustainability Project, it is a move in the right direction, walkable space for us, pictures, I know, and also waste reduction. And I know a lot of cities are moving in that direction, and I think it's a great move in the right direction. And that'll be all. Thank you all for coming.
All right, Ms. Connison.
Thank you all for coming. What was most impressive to me was, I realized that they were master students, but they were so professional, and they, the work that they did was top quality. I mean, that was better than I've seen some marketing companies produce. So that was nice to see that they were from my alma mater. Always nice to see. I was wondering, Dawn, have you, do you know what time of the day these are, or is it all times of the day that these students are at?
Students want to ask between about two twenty to about probably three to four five.
I mean, that's great that you're able to go ahead and pinpoint that. That will be super helpful. I know that in my neighborhood, we were having the same issue with the students all kind of throwing rocks and doing some damage, and our neighborhood literally had a meeting. We kind of got together and said, you know what? We're pinpointing the time that these things are happening. You know, I know that people work, but is there anybody that is at home that's able to go ahead and to kind of watch and just see if they can go ahead and maybe, you know, maybe go out there and talk with them, obviously as a group. You don't want to ever go by yourself. But it seemed to really help just talking with them and them knowing that, you know, there's some eyes kind of looking out in your neighborhood. So that's just an idea. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Jerry, for your comments tonight.
All right, Ms. Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for everybody for coming. Thank you for those that came up and spoke. I would like to possibly speak to you afterwards. I speak to a lot of the children. I work with a lot of the children in the schools, so hopefully I can maybe be some guidance to you. Talking to the principal might also help. And that's really all I have. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.